Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting for the month of July. Let's get started. The date, location, and time of this regular meeting were emailed to the Independent Press, Bloomfield Life, The Star Ledger, the Township Clerk of the Township of Bloomfield, and posted on the Bloomfield School District website on January 7, 2021. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Guo may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Berger.
Present.
Ms. Dudley.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mr. Morse.
Here.
Ms. Salinas. Vice President Walker. President Fishman.
Here. We are on to going into executive session. Be resolved, the Bloomfield Board of Education will adjourn to close meeting to discuss items which fall in exception of our open meetings policy and permits the board to have private discussion since it deals with specific exceptions contained in NJSA 10-4-12B. Excuse me. Specifically collective bargaining agreements. May I have a motion, please?
Motion second.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Thank you, Mr. Berger. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. We'll see you all in approximately one hour. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll try this again. Thank you for staying with us during our technical difficulties as we return to the public session of our meeting. We're opening up on number four of your agenda, the first hearing of the public. There'll be a maximum of 45 minutes for public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and as we have done in the past, we are opening up to agenda and non-agenda items at this time. The call-in number, I believe, is posted on Facebook as well as the agenda if you'd like to call in, and Ms. Guo also has some emails in her inbox. First, we'll go to Mr. Atkinson. Is there any callers, sir? Seeing none, we'll move over to Ms. Guo. Ms. Guo, I believe you have some emails.
Yes. I have a few emails, sorry, and they are related to solar panels, so I'm going to read them first, and then I'll have Mr. Gunkavas to make comments and Mr. Flores to make comments. So I'll start with this one. It's from Carolyn Vidal, 108 Floyd Avenue. The Board of Education adopted a resolution to participate in sustainable jersey for schools but has not applied for the bronze level. Why not? Especially since school systems get points for sustainability actions like solar installations and achieving bronze or silver level can qualify our district for grant money. The second one is somewhat related. It's from Maria Sanders. I hope you have been able to enjoy your summer so far and take some much-needed time to recover from this past school year with all the heat waves, power outages, and many other climate-related concerns. I have some questions and would like to have some clarification. One, last May at the War II Town Hall meeting, the mayor said that there were no updates on the solar project. Can you tell me more about why? Number two, there was a two-hour Zoom professional development session early in June on sustainability information for teachers with no mention of the value of solar panels on school property to help combat climate change and save taxpayer money while solar be addressed in future Green Team workshops.
Thank you, Mrs. Guo. I'm just going to comment on two of them since they overlap a little bit. In regards to Mrs. Vidal's inquiry, thanks to many people in Bloomfield, namely Lou Capello and Vicki Guo. The Bloomfield School District has been working diligently the past few months applying for the bronze status with sustainable jersey. Our application is currently under review, and we expect to hear back in August if we have achieved this bronze status. We are excited for the prospect of receiving this recognition and starting the process of applying for grants that are made available through Sustainable Jersey for certified school districts. Thank you for your inquiring about this application status, and we hope that we could share news of our certification with the public soon. In regards to the professional development question from Mrs. Sanders, a free professional development was offered session was offered by two very generous Bloomfield parents and community members. This professional development was offered to selected staff in order to satisfy just one of the requirements for the Bloomfield School's submission for possible certification through Sustainable New Jersey. At that time, solar panels or solar in general were not one of the topics that were mandated to be discussed among staff members. Thank you.
Next one is from Alyssa Heedy. As of July 2021, there has been no request for proposal posted on the town's website asking for companies to present their solar installation plans. It is now almost a year after the town council agreed to have Greener by Design created an RFP. Can you please provide an update on the status of the RFP and an explanation why this effort has been delayed? Next one is from Ted Glick, 500 Broughton Avenue. Scientists say that time is short to avoid permanent climate chaos. We must replace polluting energy sources like coal, oil, and nature gases, gas, with clean renewable energy such as solar and wind. What is the timeframe for Bloomfield to do its part? Next one from Ms. Florence Rolino. I have had I have had solar panels on my house for 10 years, and the survey, even though this is a residence, only took a few minutes to assess that solar panels were doable for me. Here, it is over two years, and a good deal of money has been spent with nothing to show for the expenditure. When I had my solar panels installed, I took advantage of the federal tax credit and state rebate. Now that these deductions are being reduced, I wonder why Bloomfield is not taking advantage of any monetary saving benefits. Lastly, everyone is aware of the climate change and the need to change to renewable forms of energy. Why is it that Bloomfield School System is not doing more to create an atmosphere conducive to renewable energy and to use this as a learning tool for the children in the school system? I will be attending the Zoom meeting this Tuesday to see who is for the solar panels and what Greener by Design has to say for their ultimately timed ultimately and sadly disrespectful disrespectfulness to the residents of Bloomfield. Next one is from Satinique Marguerite. I am a proud owner of the solar panel on our home at 34 Malice Avenue. We have received a federal tax credit as well as trade for ASRECs. Although financial motivations aren't our primary concern when we got our solar panels, it has been definitely nice to receive financial rewards from owning solar panels. We know, however, that federal tax credit reductions deductions have been reduced over the last couple of years, making the cost of solar more expensive. Why has Bloomfield dragged its feet, missing out on these large savings opportunity? Thank you for your consideration. Next one is from Susan Marlins, 110 Mountain Avenue. Dear Bloomfield Councilperson, it was suggested that creating solar infrastructure would allow us to create a municipal microgrid in case of power outages from natural disasters. Is there any future discussion further discussion about this? I have had cancer treatment from a father who was a chemist dealing in detergent all of his life. I only want to use the emergency gas stove when we have power outages, but it endangers my life from its pollutants and lighting gas in the dark. We invested solar panels because of the savings, but the panels could well save my life in an emergency. Why are we not moving on green infrastructure plans? With many thanks for your help on this. Last, next one, Noel Gates. I'd like to thank everyone involved for their data-driven approach to our safe return to school. With schools opening full-time in the fall, I hope that the board and leadership will continue to make data-driven decisions and require similar safety measures to those in place this past spring, including masks, ventilation, and regular disinfecting until families can choose to have their young children vaccinated and the COVID variants cease to be a growing threat to them. On the topic of cleaner air and healthy kids in a healthy environment, I'd like to support Bloomfield's move to solar energy and express my hope that we avoid putting money back into outdated infrastructure. Off note is the fact that Greener by Design, which is the company, provides strategies for improving economical, environmental, and social improvements, was given two contracts over two years to survey Bloomfield's public buildings and schools that are suitable for solar panels. They were paid over $300,000, over $30,000 for taxpayers' dollar. That what have the what have they accomplished? Are their reports and/or plans from these efforts being utilized? Will the public be informed of their findings? I thank you for your time and commitment to Bloomfield students and family. Last one is from Jan Califf. A report by Greener by Design states that Bloomfield Bloomfield could save over $2.9 million during a 15-year solar installation contract. Why hasn't this been widely publicized? Mr. Gunkavas?
Thank you, Mrs. Guo. Good questions. Okay, number one, we support we support sustainability, and that can be accomplished in a variety of different ways. Number two, the Greener by Design report is something that was solicited by the City of Bloomfield, not by the Board of Education or the School District. Number three, the Bloomfield Board of Education and the Facilities Department have been working on an ongoing basis, even during the pandemic, to continue to address the long-term needs of our facilities as identified by our district architect in a facilities assessment report created in 2014. Number four, the district continues to make sustainability a priority. While solar panels are easy to see, projects including roof and window replacement improvement how improve our building envelopes and efficiency standards. New high-efficiency boilers reduce our energy consumption, and new interior finishes and air purifiers improve our indoor air quality for students and staff. Number five, we welcome the opportunity to continue to partner with the town, county, or state in continuing to improve sustainability in our facilities. At this moment in our history, our first priority is getting our students back to school this fall. We do appreciate the questions. Thank you.
One more?
Okay, one more email. It's from Alyssa Heedy. In addition to the solar initiative, I would like to request that the board revisit the decision to replace our gas HVAC systems with gas HVAC systems instead of systems that use more sustainable energy sources. We could utilize the energy produced by solar panels to run the systems and remove our resilience on non-renewable resources.
Thank you, everybody, for your emails. Mr. Atkinson, is there any? No callers? Seeing none, we'll close the first hearing of the public and move on to reports. Mr. G, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. First of all, I'd like to share that our summer programs K-12 are moving along very productively. This is the first summer in Bloomfield history that we've run summer programs at all of our elementary, middle school, and high school, and they are working very successfully. Secondly, our central office team is planning for a successful, excuse me, successful and exciting September opening, and we look forward to that. Number three, again, a thank you to all of our stakeholders who support our efforts to make Bloomfield schools the best for all of our students and wishing everybody a safe, healthy, happy summer vacation. Thank you.
Well, Mr. G, thanks for stealing some of my thunder.
Great minds think alike.
Just to piggyback what he just said, our summer learning program for the identified students has been going extremely well. If you want to take a look at the photo album under the Communities tab on our website, there are some really cool pictures. They always say pictures are worth 1,000 words, so I'll just drop it at that. I will remind you from Ms. Guo's office that our lunch services are still happening. And my bulk of my report is to congratulate that gentleman over there that we are very, very proud to announce that our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Salvatore Gunkavas, has been recognized as the 2021-2022 Essex County Superintendent of the Year. This is a very prestigious award given to a superintendent who exhibits leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and active participation and community involvement with an understanding of regional, national, and international issues. Mr. G's vision for Bloomfield has resulted in a successful one-to-one Chromebook initiative for all pupils with the addition of multiple content interventionists who have targeted core content areas to close achieving gaps based on student assessment data. Under his leadership, we've also revamped our website significantly and increased our parent guardian communication with central office as well as all officials in Bloomfield. We have now have a proactive social media accounts and presence across the district and a regular outreach to community using that social media and other various things such as our digital backpack. He has successfully, this is like a tongue twister, successfully and proactively established partnerships with Sandy Hook Promise, Dylan's Wings of Change, and the Wingman Program in order to provide all youth a positive character-building school experience. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Bloomfield Board of Education, Sal, we thank you for your leadership and always putting kids first, and if you could all congratulate Mr. G on this monumental accomplishment.
Thank you, President Fishman. Thank you, board members. What? Oh, my God. Oh, my God, this is beautiful. We want to read.
So it says presented to Salvatore Gunkavas Superintendent, Bloomfield Public Schools, Essex County Superintendent of the Year, 2021-2022. Congratulations from the Bloomfield Board of Education as well as your rest of your dream team over here and everybody else as part of the Bloomfield Public Schools. We thank you for what you do and continue to do, and we're happy that you are going to stick with us for a few more years. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Just a side note while he's talking to everybody.
I believe this is the first time in Bloomfield history.
Thank you, guys.
Correct? Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Nick, first time ever? First time ever in the history of the Bloomfield Public Schools that we have a County Superintendent of the Year. And especially going through a pandemic, kudos to him and his administrative team and everybody who worked so hard to service the kids of Bloomfield and give them the best educational career, K-12. And I can say that both as someone on the board and a product of this district. So it's a very proud moment from one bangle to another. So thank you, Sal, for all that you do. And I know that thank you is a very small word, and I know that a plaque is just a small memento, but you what you do day in and day out is not normally seen, and I know you do get out to the schools as much as you can, but what happens behind the scene and all the phone calls that you take and the late-night meetings and dealing with the nine of us and our thousand questions to make sure that we know what we're doing out here, it didn't go unnoticed because this is not chosen by us. This is chosen by your colleagues across the county, so they stood up and took notice of all your hard work and dedication. So kudos to you, sir.
Thank you, President Fishman. Thank you, board members. I thank my colleagues in Essex County. They're all tremendous school leaders, and it's certainly an honor to receive this. To work with nine people whose passion and commitment is to do what's best for children as Board of Education, I cannot thank you enough. I can't thank you enough for the support that you've given this administration during an extremely difficult year during a global pandemic and all that has transpired this year. I can't thank my three colleagues to my right enough. Joe, Nick, and Vicki have been extraordinary. I didn't need to ask them to come in during a pandemic. They came in on their own because of their dedication, their professionalism, their true beauty as individuals to work with who really are amazing, and I'm blessed to work with them. I'm blessed to work with directors, principals, and supervisors who who love kids and want to do the best for children. I'm blessed to work with teachers who, God, those children needed you guys this year, and you came through through Chromebooks, and you couldn't wait to get back and when everything was safe and work with your kids and the coaches and secretaries and transportation unit, the lunch people who worked with us in a variety of different ways as their jobs were just completely turned upside down, but we didn't get any complaints. It's Bloomfield, I've said it a million times, you know, this is a beautiful community, and we care about this community, and we love our children, and we want to do what's best, and we're not perfect all the time, but we do give it 150% effort to make sure that if you're in Bloomfield and you get an education here, you're going to do well in society at large, and we have tons and tons of kids over the years who have done that, some who are working for us, others that are alumni that support initiatives that we do, members of this community in terms of small businesses that come out to support all the things we do, home and school associations, parents and our students. I mean, we had a magnificent graduation this year, and we had a tremendous graduation given a global pandemic last year, and the students were terrific. The student athletes who had to go through all the protocols starting last August and right up until the end of the school year cooperated with everything that we said, and it wasn't easy. Being a ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grader, there were things that you guys want to do, and we know it, but you you did what we asked of you, and you came through. And all of our clubs and groups that continued to meet and again follow the protocols, if this year doesn't prove that we are an outstanding school district because we have the compassion, we have the love, we have the understanding, we have the empathy, everything that you want in a beautiful human being, we have here in Bloomfield in our educational community and a community at large. I can't thank you enough. The plaque means the world to me. Your thank yous mean to the world to me, and I've been blessed to work, come here in 1976 and work for 45 years in a community that has supported me in every single way, and if I've given a little of that back, then I'm doing my job, and I look forward to the next couple of years working with this Board of Ed, this administration, and the entire Bloomfield School District. So thank you all very, very much. It's because of you I was able to to receive this award. Thank you.
I'd just like to point out, this is the first time that I have bigger and better news than Sal and his report. Just saying. That never happens. Congratulations, Sal, and now we all have to get back to work. We are at number six of the agenda, and sure.
Sal, I've been in the district for almost 12 years, and four superintendents, sir, you have provided some stability the years up to the COVID, and it was on your broad shoulders that we got through it, sir. This is really an example of leadership for our community to look at because it's hard enough being a superintendent of Bloomfield, but to do it during the global pandemic and to do it with a mentality that we were in isolation, and if we're going to get through it, we're going to have to do it ourselves, and do it and have your peers salute you for this achievement, sir. That's the way to do it, and that's exactly what the Bloomfield parents and students expect from their superintendents, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Did anyone else want to talk? Sorry. Okay, we'll celebrate some more. I think some chocolate cake will be in the future, just saying.
I thought we had chocolate cake.
No. I found I found out too late, so chocolate cake the next time. I'll get some chocolate cake the next time. You know I love chocolate cake. All right, now we just told the whole world that. Anyway, we're moving on to the approval of the minutes. Number six on your agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Heller, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Salinas. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Ms. Guo may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ms. Dudley.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
I abstain because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay. Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Ms. Salinas.
Oh, I'm sorry. I abstain.
President Fishman.
We are now moving on to number seven, the curriculum and instruction package. Mr. Berger, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. The Curriculum Instruction Committee met this week at 12 o'clock, I mean, this time on July 14, and in attendance was myself, Mr. Morse, and Mr. Flores, along with a cameo from Ms. Dudley, who did wonderful. And let me just tell you real quick what happened. We have we have a textbook adoption request coming through for AP Biology on the 12th grade. I urge all the board members to click on the hot links. You can find out what that's all about. We have a few curriculum guides on for approval. If anybody would like to see what's going on with the curriculum guides, they're available in Joe's office. Just make an appointment, and go see him. We have various policies and regulations for First Read as notated on the agenda, guys. They're all mandated, and they have to do with evaluating employees like principals and vice principals and like. We got a wonderful summer learning update, which is kind of like the one Sal just gave, and no EpiPen delegates, no professional development conferences, and the only other thing we discussed was intervention strategies for some of our learning loss slash for September. And with that, President Fishman, may I make a motion for 7A through 7C, please?
How about 7E?
Yes, 7A through 7E. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Salinas. Any discussion on curriculum and instruction? Ms. Guo may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ms. Dudley.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Ms. Salinas.
Yes.
President Fishman.
Yes. Can I? No, we're pressing this one. There we go. All right, finance and facility package. Mrs. Salinas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. Our committee met on Wednesday, July 14. Present was Ms. Dudley, Mr. Walker, Ms. Guo, Mr. Skazova. Myself was absent. I was away on vacation. Mr. Skazova provided project updates and shared images to show status of these projects with the committee. The Demeris Masonry Project, project is approximately 80% completion level with the architect's approval, the bridging for the front part of the building. will be removed within the next two weeks. Forest Glen and Franklin Roof Projects, these two projects are progressing as scheduled at this point. There might be a need to use a more readily-available layering material as a substitute due to material shortage. Other summer projects in district, Fairview and Franklin ceiling replacement projects are progressing smoothly. BMS sidewalk replacement is almost complete. The floor tile replacements at various Watson's classrooms have been completed. Ms. Guo discussed the resolutions that will be included in tonight's meeting. Um, the agenda including capital project payment applications for RFP solutions for Fairview Security Camera, Spartan Construction for Demeris Masonry Restoration Project, and Gally Construction, Inc., for Franklin and Forest Glen Roof Projects. Ms. Guo also talked about the resolution to submit the federal IDEA-FY22 grant to DOE for approval. The grant amount is approximately 1.6 million. Eighty-one percent of it will be used to cover tuition for out-of-district placements, and the remainder will be used to pay for OT, PT, speech, and counseling services. The committee also discussed the following two items, mandated policy and regulation number 6471, school district travel, and Demeris Brick Repair. Use of an additional $6,071 from allowance, leaving about $12,300 balance in allowance. Ms. Fishman, this concludes my report. May I please have a motion to move eight A through eight K? Thank you.
Are you making that motion or asking for a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm making motion.
Okay.
Eight A through eight K.
Sorry, took me a minute to replay that in my head. So thank you, Mrs. Salinas, for the first. I need a second, please. Thank you, Mr. Berger. Any discussion on the finance and facility package? Ms. Guo may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. For those of you following along, we are on number nine, the Personnel and Management Package. Mr. Heller, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. The Personnel Committee met last week on Thursday, the twenty, uh, the fifteenth of July. Um, present was Mr. Dottoli from the administration, Board Member Green, myself. This time around, President Fishman was unable to attend. Tonight's agenda items include the standard resignations and retirements. A big thank you to those who have served our district and the children in our district. We have appointments, leaves of absences, transfers, adjustments, extra compensation, both, um, district-funded and federally funded. And during the meeting, we reviewed the, um, various board, uh, documents that appear tonight. We talked about the HIV school self-assessment for the 2019-2020, um, year. Mr. Dottoli and Mr. Bruno, who was also in attendance, reviewed the individual school self-assessment reports. Ms. Green had some questions, um, and both of them answered them. Uh, Ms. Green has professional expertise in this area. We also had a couple of non-agenda items that we talked about during the meeting. With that, I would like to make, uh, to move resolution items nine A through nine I.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Anyone, uh, discussion on this package? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. We are onto number ten, policy and regulations. There are a bunch of first-read policies and regulations. These are all mandated by the state. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Second?
Second.
Was that Ms. Dudley? Thank you, Ms. Dudley.
You're welcome.
Any discussion on the policies and regulations? Roll call, please.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. Uh, for those of you following along, we are now at number eleven, the second hearing of the public. It is open for non-agenda and agenda items. Um, there'll be a maximum of forty-five minutes for public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The call-in number is on Facebook, as it was also on top of our agenda. Um, I'm going to go to Ms. Guo first to see if she has anything in her inbox. Nothing. Mr. Atkinson? Nope, nobody wants to talk to us tonight. Seeing none, we're going to close the hearing of the public and move on.
Just, just real quick, not to interrupt. Uh, Ms. Guo had shared with me that Mrs. Alyssa Heed, there was, uh, something read, I believe, in the first hearing of the public. We are on receipt, receipt of Mrs. Alyssa Heed's inquiry in regards to HVAC. Uh, thank you for reaching out to us. We will be working collaboratively and taking recommendations from the architects of choice that will be overseeing the HVAC process moving forward. So thank you for reaching out to us, and I'm sure more information will come about over the next few months.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Seeing nothing else, we'll close the second hearing of the public and move on to business. We're at, uh, Delegate and Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Anyone? Okay, we're going to move on to business, new business, old business, and information items. Mr. Heller?
Thank you, President Fishman. Just a inquiry to the administration. If, um, they're registering us for Workshop 2021, I think that there was an early bird. You could sign up a whole bunch of people for like $2, really low rate. Um, is that in the plans?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, super. Thanks. I'll schedule my vacation days.
Yeah, unfortunately, we are virtual with that again. Um, the, the, the school boards convention is virtual in October. Yeah. Um, just on a, on a personal note, I just wanted to thank everybody, uh, on this side of the table and those of you out in TV land and Facebook land from the district who, uh, reached out to my family. Uh, we had a sudden, uh, sudden passing of my father this past week, so thank you to everybody who held up, uh, all the committee meetings as the first time since 2013. Uh, I missed any meetings. It was very difficult. Uh, my head is still a little spinny from it, but thank you to everybody who showed up, uh, sent cards, sent well wishes. Um, on behalf of my family, I say thank you. And with that being said, it's time for everybody's favorite part of the meeting called adjournment.
Motion.
Uh, one of you guys can have it. Can I get a second?
Second.
You can all have it. Can I get it, can I get all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.